If you overhear a threat against our school, or any students or staff, reporting it right away is crucial. It's your responsibility. It doesn't matter how it was intended. School threats are no joke. Don't pass it along and don't spread rumors. Report it to a teacher, an administrator, or a school safety officer. Report it, don't share it.
They better not come to school tomorrow. Someone's gonna get hurt.
If you see or hear something, then say something to an adult. Your action can make a huge difference to help keep our schools safe. Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke.
What's going on everybody? Lieutenant Ricky Waters with Paulding County Sheriff's Office here. We're coming to you guys to tell you about a wonderful event we have coming up on February 8th, 2025, at 8:00 AM in beautiful Hiram, Georgia, at the Roundtree Recreation Center. What's it called Detective Aperson?
It is called the Polar Bear Plunge Special Olympics, Georgia, Paulding County.
That's right. Alright guys, now we're gonna cut to Sheriff Ashley Henson and let him tell you guys a little more about the event. Thank you so much. Sheriff Henson?
Thanks so much Lieutenant Waters. My name's Ashley Henson and I'm the sheriff of Paulding County. And we're so excited about the 2025 Polar Bear Plunge that's gonna be happening at Roundtree Recreation. This is such a wonderful event. We've done it in the past and we're gonna redo it again this year. But the money that we raise for this event goes to Paulding County Special Olympics. I've been to these events many, many times. And it's just, it brings us such great joy to see these young people and the enjoyment they get out of being a part of Special Olympics. So, we're excited about the Polar Bear Plunge and we hope everybody comes out and supports this event. Remember, you're gonna be freezing for a reason. Thank you so much.
Alright guys, on February 8th, 2025, come take the Polar Bear Plunge with us at 172 Ship Circle in Hiram, Georgia. That's at Roundtree Recreation Center in beautiful Hiram, Georgia. Have a great day.
Welcome to Veterans Memorial Park, located on the Watson Government Complex here in Paulding County, Georgia.
Our serene amphitheater and peaceful walking trail provide a tranquil space for reflection and gratitude. Within the park, you'll find monuments paying tribute to the heroes of Paulding County who sacrificed their lives in service, as well as those who perished in the 9/11 attacks. Children can enjoy laughter and play on our well-equipped playground, while visitors can stroll along the scenic half-mile trail, surrounded by the beauty of nature. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Veterans Park, a place of honor, remembrance, and gratitude for our nation's heroes.
January 1st, 2025, I became the sheriff of Paulding County. And this morning, we're here at the Paulding County Community Center. We're having a swearing-in ceremony along with a promotional ceremony for a number of our staff. And so, we've got a breakfast catered by The Waffle House, which has been sponsored by Paulding Public Safety Appreciation. So, we're just extraordinarily appreciative of the support from community organizations like Paulding Public Safety Appreciation, our Board of Commissioners for letting us use this space. It's just been a great, great morning so far and we're excited about all the things to come. You know, midnight is when my term began and Sheriff Gullidge has ended. And so, we had a ceremonial handing over the keys. Sheriff Gullidge came in and handed me the keys. He signed off on the radio. I signed on and initiated my term as sheriff of Paulding County. But just a great way to send Sheriff Gullidge off with style and to let our administration begin. It was a great, great evening, it was well-attended, and we hit the ground running. We wanna set the tone. We wanna speak to our staff. We wanna let them know the expectations we have with our administration. And we wanna have a time where we can fellowship, allow them to share a meal, get sworn in, and let them know who else is gonna be promoted and who our command staff's gonna be. We wanna let them know, you know, what we're gonna do in 2025. This is something that's constitutional. We have to swear our folks in. Every single one of our employees, including myself, was sworn into Sheriff Gullidge. And when he, you know, retired, they're not sworn into a sheriff anymore. And so, they have to be sworn into me as the incoming sheriff. And so, every single employee, deputies, jailers, even our civilian staff have to be sworn into the sheriff. I just wanna tell our citizens, number one, thank you for putting your confidence in me and electing me to be the 50th sheriff of Paulding County. As your sheriff, I promise we will continue to work hard to ensure your safety. We're gonna be community-driven, innovative, and forward-thinking. And we're gonna keep this community safe for years to come.
School safety is on everyone's mind these days. And even a simple comment to a friend can cause fear and confusion. When you're talking with your friends online, at school, or even on the school bus, don't make comments about weapons or threats to school safety. If you make verbal threats or talk about bringing weapons to school, joking or not, you will face serious consequences. Be smart, don't do it, it's no joke.
Hey guys, if I could get you to settle down, let me please, and remain seated in the back.
Sick of this place, man. I'm probably gonna shoot it up.
No, I was just planning on wearing this dress that I got.
Phase 2, this is bus 16, I have got an emergency.
The words you use are incredibly important. Think before you speak. If you make a threat, whether serious or not, you can cause great harm to others and end up facing serious consequences. Threats against public schools are a serious crime. It's no joke.
Welcome to Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park, located in Paulding County, Georgia. This park features several tranquil lakes, vibrant playgrounds, and plenty of recreational activities, including a walking trail for everyone to enjoy.
From tranquil lakes to vibrant playgrounds, our park offers a plethora of amenities for you and your family to enjoy. Whether you're seeking adventure on our disc golf course, basking in the sun at our sand volleyball court, or simply taking a leisurely stroll along our walking trails, there's something here for everyone. For more information or to plan your visit, please call the Parks Administration Office at 770-445-8065. Larry C. Ragstow White Oak Park, where memories are made and nature thrives.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the February, excuse me, January, I've already jumped ahead a month, January meeting for the Paulding County Planning Commission. This time, I would ask you if you have an audible device, cellphone, or what have you, please turn it off or silence so that it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. So, on our behalf for the Paulding Planning Commission, we wish everybody a Happy New Year, 28 days into it. So, I hope it's going well. We are going to defer consideration of the minutes from the previous meeting of this body until the end of the meeting. We are reviewing a potential correction to those minutes and we'll have confirmation of that by the end of the meeting. So, at this time, just go over a couple of things. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body. Applications that are presented to it will be heard and then recommendations will be made and forwarded to the Board of Commissioners or to the city of Hiram, depending on the jurisdiction that the property actually lies in. The applicant, it's, the applicant will be able to present for 15 minutes. There's 15 minutes allotted to them. They may use all of that time or conserve some of it for rebuttal. But anybody wishing to speak on behalf of that application subsequent to the applicant counts against that time as well. So, anybody wanting to do that, please be mindful of the time. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of the application or simply may have questions, comments, or concerns, 15 minutes is allotted for that side as well. I would ask you also if you see that there's an abundance of people up to speak on a particular subject, that you keep your comments to the point and as brief as possible to con be considered to the people behind you. So, at this time, I will ask Mr. Robinson if there's any announcements that I need to make.
We're good to go and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, if you would, please introduce the first application.
Mr. Chairman, do y'all wanna do the election of chairman?
I was jumping right into it with both feet. Let me find my vote sheet. Yes, I am. Yes, we do need to go through the protocol of electing officers. So, we have one position for the chairman and then one for the vice chairman. So, if anybody would like to make a motion in that regard, start with the chairman.
I nominate Jody Palmer as chairman.
I have a nomination for Jody Palmer as chairman from Ellis Aston. I have a second from Roger Leggett, all in favor. Motion passes 6-0 and 1. And then, for the vice chairman, is there a motion on that?
I'm gonna make a motion for Roger Leggett.
Well, a motion for Roger Leggett to be vice chairman. Is there a second? And that was by James Steele.
Second.
Second by Mr. Callahan, Sam Callahan. If you, all in favor, motion passes 6-0 and 1. Oh, 5-0 and 2. We'll get it right. Alright, and again, we've deferred the consideration for the minutes in the meeting to the end of the meeting today. Now, Mr. Robinson, if you would.
First application, 2025-01-SPSA Site Plan/Stipulation Amendment. Application by Pulte Home Company, LLC, care of Adam J. Rosen, requesting to revise previous approved site plan and stipulations of rezoning application 2020-13Z to allow for the development of approximately 17.30 acres within the R-55 Active Adult Residential District with up to 51 single-family detached homes. Property is located in Land Lot 321, District 3, Section 3. It's on the south side of Graves Road and Cedar Crest Road at Cedar Crest Village Drive, saying Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval of the applicant's request to amend or remove stipulations, which would be number 9, 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, 18, 22, and 24 of the prior case, rezoning case.
Is the applicant present?
Applicant's present. And we've had no calls or with questions or concerns at this time.
If you would please sign in, state your name and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and planning commissioners. I'm Adam Rosen here on behalf of Pulte Homes in this stipulation amendment application. I have a handout for you that I'll approach to hand to you now. You're already shuffling through papers, so sorry to add to that. And I'll, I'll try to walk through this as we present to you this afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to be able to have you consider this application. This is a project that, as Mr. Robinson said, was originally rezoned to R-55 in 2020 for at that time, what would have been for 70 homes. This plan is to maintain the existing R-55 zoning. We're proposing some changes to those original conditions. At that time, you had, as you often have, voluntary conditions and those that were imposed or recommended by the county. Those that we're asking to amend or modify are, were voluntary conditions at the time this was presented to you by Elite Engineering in 2020. I'll just start by walking through, flipping through the PowerPoint with me. The first two pages is an outline of the property. I know you see that here. It's about 19 acres outside of the green space area. It's a remaining of approximately 17 acres. I know you're familiar with the property, believe you're familiar with the property. Also, on the second page, just showed you the outline of the neighboring golf course, just to give you a perspective of where this, this site is. And immediately south of the existing Cedar Crest development that fronts on Cedar Crest Road. On the third page of our, our presentation, I'm showing you the zoning map. And that shows you the 2020 case that was approved at R-55 with just, you know, for your reference, the, the zonings that surround, surround the property, showing particularly the transition from Cedar Crest Road and the R-7 development to this R-55. The next page is the original site plan that was approved in 2020, if I haven't lost you yet. That, that shows you the proposed, at the time, 70 lots. You'll see from our plan, obviously, it's the same property. So, the layout is very similar to what was approved in 2020. We have a different lot size and some different features of it that have reduced the overall number of lots and a different home product being offered. But otherwise, you're gonna see a very similar layout to what was approved at the time. A perimeter buffering that was approved at the time and location of detention from that time. The next two pages are the, are from your staff analysis that show you the original conditions. Again, the first 1 through 7, those separated from the remaining stipulations, that were the voluntary stipulations. And, and your staff has, had gone through and highlighted which one of those to be focused on for our purposes for today. And then, the next page is what we submitted, showing those, of those that we're proposing to change or eliminate, what the changes are that we're proposing. And what I'll do is I'll come back to that, particularly if there are questions about those, those requests. But I'll flip past that to our site plans that we've submitted. One is a non-colored and then the next one after that is a colored site plan. So, you can see a similar layout from the previously approved, the lot count to 51. And instead of having the amenity in the, you know, the middle in the circle area of the property, we show it on the southern side, but still maintaining similar amenity features that were approved at that time. The next couple of pages, before filing this application and long before getting to the point of doing so, Ross Ripple, who is here with me today with Pulte Homes, has spent a lot of time working with our neighbors to the north. And this has been shown to you as Cedar Crest Village Phase 2, the currently built-out Cedar Crest to our north. And some of their association representatives are here with us today in the, in the front here. They submitted to us a letter of approval of the application and that was after meeting with Ross and Pulte many times to come up with what these stipulation changes would be. That was a combination of what Pulte thought would be successful and that they were happy with as far as what they were willing to see being developed next door to them. So, they echoed that in this letter that we submitted to staff previously. So, I've put that in here again for you to see from their HOA board in support of the application. The next one shows you a pavilion in pergola area. We, we have a request to reduce the actual pavilion area. Ultimately, you see on the site plan that it's the same or similar size to what it was before. But with the pergola and with the overall building structure area, we wanted to make sure that we weren't running afoul of what that requirement was. But I think you can see from this picture and what was proposed originally, it's still the same, same amenity package being proposed. The next five or six pages, we've shown you the examples of the architecture that we're proposing. Because the original case conditioned certain architecture, Pulte's product is obviously different from what was being proposed in 2020, we've asked to amend that condition and we've given you that architecture that they're proposing to be modified to. These meet the R-55 requirements of current with, with the garage requirement being met. And then, the last, the last couple of pages, the second to last page, I've shown you one of the last conditions that we're adding a parcel to. At the time, there was concern to make sure that this project did not receive a land disturbance permit until the other Cedar Crest Village properties were free of liens and property taxes paid and the declarant control changed over. So, we've maintained that condition just to make sure that there was still the same level of comfort to know that those properties were in good standing before we moved forward with our development because we do access through that property. So, I've shown you what those parcels are just because the condition just had parcel IDs to actually see which properties that was referring to. And then, the last page is an exhibit that we've prepared. That is more of a plan review item. It's just showing that we have the 50-foot access required to the public road from our property, which is a requirement under the R-55. So, that's just another visual for you to see that we've, we've gotten to that point as far as what a plan review item would be. Overall, we set out to develop this property in a way that we think, Pulte thinks, will be successful now for almost five years later, before getting to here again, starting with the association and making sure that this was something that they were in agreement with, knowing that they're our neighbor and they're who we will be working with and accessing through. And so, we've done that before getting to this point. So, we're excited about what can happen here to move forward with development. It's been some time coming, obviously, for a case zoned four years ago to not get to this point yet. But I think Pulte did the work in the right way to get to this point to make sure it was something that can be done. Chris mentioned earlier that there had not been any calls. I'm not aware of any opposition or any phone calls. I did speak with the property owner to our south, Mr. Lovin, who also, I don't believe is in opposition, but wanted to clarify. And I'll just tell you for the record now that condition number 25, at the time this was originally approved, required a landscape buffer along the southern border of the property. We're still maintaining that same 35-foot landscape buffer, but it's a different property address because it's now been split into two. And so, I just wanted to clarify. And so I just wanted to clarify for their comfort and for everybody's clarity that it is now 4478 and 4482 Cedar Crest. And at this time, it's no longer the Binkley property. It's James and Linda Lovin and David Cowan. And so we're happy to accommodate, making sure that that's clear. And then also to clarify that there will be landscaping around the detention pond, which borders their driveway. So those are two things we talked about this afternoon. Happy to answer any questions. We ask for your recommendation of approval, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Currently, you have about five minutes remaining of your time.
I have a question.
Sure. Let me go through this first, if you don't mind. Just to be clear, the stipulations that were shown to be both either amended or stricken, we're looking at a complete striking of stipulation number 12 and number 16. And then the rest are amended in some manner or shape. Is that, everybody's on the same page?
Yes, that's correct. Number 12 is eliminating that requirement. If you look at the architecture, and part of the reason for these changes is not because it's a holistic change for all the product, but because there are product types that may not meet those. So if you look at the architecture, you'll see gables and a lot of what's proposed. But yes, so 12 to be eliminated. And then 16 was one that was a condition about a sales price, and so we felt like that needed to be removed.
Right. Mr. Leggett, you have a question?
Due to some of the recent fires that we've seen in California, and this being an R-55 residential site, obviously, fire is a big issue with houses that are so close. And you're talking about elderly people. Some people have a lot of trouble hearing. I've got hearing aids, and a lot of people do, but when people go to sleep, they take your hearing aids out. Are you amenable to having your units having a bell-type heat sensor where a bell would wake these people up where just a smoke alarm doesn't? I mean, I'd have to...
Why don't you come up and say your name?
If you would please sign in and state your name for the record.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll do this.
Okay. Yeah, hadn't really addressed that yet, but...
I know you mentioned your name, but go ahead and state it.
Ross Ripple. I work with Pulte Group, Pulte Homes.
Thank you.
Ross Ripple. We hadn't really thought about that, but I think it's certainly something we could consider doing.
I've looked into them. They're not that expensive.
Yeah.
And you're talking about something that will wake somebody up inside a house.
Yeah.
They need, they can feel the vibration if nothing else, to know something wrong. But that age, people are not going to hear a smoke detector. It's basically, you know, useless.
Yeah. What did you say it was called?
It's a bell-type heat sensor.
Okay. Bell-type heat sensor.
Yeah.
Got it. And those would go in the units?
Yes, they go in the units.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, certainly look into it. I don't see why that would be an issue.
I'm going to propose it be a standard thing with these type of residences to the... I hope the commissioners would go along with that and put it in our ordinance, but it's just such a safety issue. When you've got houses this close...
Yeah.
You're going to lose the initial house, and if you're lucky, you'll be able to go in the two adjoining houses, pull the ceiling out, pull the walls out, and maybe you can stop them in those units. Sometimes you can't. We've had one in the Greystone community that there were three total losses and like, there's like five damaged windows. It was a big loss.
Yeah.
And that's with a 40-foot between the houses.
Okay.
So, but that's, you know, houses can be replaced, people can.
That's right.
But that's going to be a big issue in a house that's 55 and up.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure that's something we could be agreeable to. So if you want to propose that, absolutely, we can...
If you would agree to that, if you'd like...
We could agree to that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Mr. Ripple.
Sure.
So are you in the land department or the production side of Pulte?
Land, land side.
So on the production side, you've given us five different floor plans with four or five different elevations.
That's right.
So do you know, are these the exact ones you're going to build?
They are going to be very similar. I mean, this product lineup is what we intend to build. We have it at Lake Crest in Beaufort, Georgia. And then that's, those are the examples that you see there in those exhibits. And then we also build this product at Wimberly, which is in Powder Springs.
Okay.
So these are our 40-foot homes, two-car garages. They range from two to five-bedroom, depending on the floor plan, 1,660 square feet to, I think, 1,937. So just a range of options that we intend to build there.
Do you know which ones typically sell better?
I mean, I would say, I think it's the Mystique or the Mainstay that typically sell well. The Prosperity isn't necessarily a home-run product, but it is one that's a little more low maintenance. That is our smaller floor plan. It was one that we would just prefer to have in there for optionality for any buyers that come through that might want a smaller footprint to maintain.
And where I'm going to is the Prestige, just the four-sided, I mean, the four-sided hip roof. I'd be opposed to removing that elevation. LC-113.
Let me see here.
And LC-114.
Okay.
Having all cross gables.
LC-113, yeah.
113 or 14?
You said LC-113 for the...
For the Prestige.
Prestige?
And 114.
Let's go to Prestige here.
Basically, what it would be is including cross gables on all houses. All your other elevations are all cross-gable houses.
Yeah. Yeah, LC-113, I think we could probably do away with that one. But that, yeah, that's just more of an example. But the other three do look more aesthetically pleasing, so...
Yes, if I stipulate, I'm going to stipulate no four-sided hip roofs.
Okay.
Meaning that you're going to have gables to the front or cross gables both sides, which are what most of your elevations are. So the, and the only one I see that it does that on is the Prestige, LC-113 and 114.
Yes, we could be agreeable to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I feel, I feel, why do you think that a five-bedroom with people with 55 up and normally are childish at that point, why would a five-bedroom be needed in a development like this?
So I think the five-bedroom really comes in when you have that loft that can either be converted to a bedroom or not. So, for instance, that first plan, the, I think it's the, I'm forgetting the names here now, one moment.
It seemed to be a bit of an overkill, though.
Yeah, I mean, not...
You know...
I think it's the Prosperity, maybe.
You're catering to people that are basically, this may be their last home, and...
Yeah.
It seems like an awful big house just to put two people.
Yeah, that's fair. I mean, usually that fifth-bedroom option is, again, it's just a loft, so oftentimes that would just be a four-bedroom floor plan. And, you know, for instance, my parents actually have a home in Cherokee, and they were supposed to downsize, and they actually upsized to their active adult community built by Jim Chapman. And it's actually a massive home, but the good thing about it is, you know, when people come in for the holidays, they have bedrooms to provide for people. So, you know, myself, my sister, aunts and uncles. So, I mean, there are some benefits to having more bedrooms as an option. And again, I don't know how many of those units we would build. We still got to kind of dial in the marketing aspect of things and how many of each floor plan we would build. But it is an effort to provide options to potential buyers, to have a range of product with a range of bedroom options.
Paul, for some time. Any other questions from the planning commission? Thank you. May I take your seat?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do got one more question, noticing something. On the number 18, owner developer agrees to build a 20 by 200, or is that to read 20 by 26, not 20 by 260 feet?
I saw the strike of the six.
Correct. Yeah. And if you look at the, if you look at the plan, it shows, you know, the area outlined as the way that that was originally called out, I think, in the original conditions. Going back to that pavilion that I showed you, our concern was that the roof line of that pavilion's a little bit smaller, but the pergola additions actually make it pretty big. We were just concerned, we didn't want to not meet that condition, with this being the product that they anticipated building there.
Yeah, I see the strike on the 28, now the 20, but didn't see a strike on the, other than just the color differential.
Looks like 260.
So 20 by 26. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on behalf of this application? We have five minutes remaining. You may come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
My name is Michael McCravy. I'm known as Ray McCravy, but I'm the HOA vice president. And I guess the one thing that our HOA is really concerned about is getting our common property that's not been turned over. And that's one of the very last stipulation, number 25, I believe, or 24, I'm sorry. We've gotten four pieces of it. There's still two pieces that are outstanding, and so, I mean, that's a big thing.
Okay, so you're asking a question, right?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just making a comment, that that's one of the things that is very important to the HOA.
We'll note your question and come back around. Right now, we're asking for anybody who is wanting to speak on behalf of the application.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we've taken your comment into question. Do you have anything more you want to add before you sit down?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. McCravy. So is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, then. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns? So I've got that noted. All right, hearing none, then I would ask the applicant just to come back around for a moment. Again, you alluded to stipulation number 25 and said that you're still working to abide by the conditions that it set, because that was not up for change, correct? That's not being stricken, that's not being amended?
So maybe two things. 25, I think, is not, if you're talking about what we just heard, 25 is what we are...
It's 24, so, okay.
25 is what we want to make sure is clarified, that Mr. Lovin and his wife Linda are the property owners, whereas before it said Binkley. So that those two property addresses are referenced, 4482 and 4478. I think it applies either way. We just want to make sure that's clarified. 24, if you go back in the PowerPoint to where those parcels were starred, the second to last page, those are the different parcels that are referenced by parcel ID in that stipulation list. And I think what you're seeing happening is part of the reason why you haven't seen this before you, either before or developed yet, is the work that Pulte's had to do to work with the association and current ownership of those parcels, original developer entities that still have ownership, to get it into this position so that it actually can be developed. And so that is what's happening in the background, so that I think the association's voice is in support of this, to make sure that this kind of thing happens as they develop. That's 24.
Right.
So that requires that those parcel IDs be in the right association ownership and in good standing before we can get a land disturbance permit. So that way, you know that we're not developing until that's taken care of, so his concern's addressed before we get to develop.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant before we move forward?
I have a question of staff. Mr. Robinson, why does Sideset back on things now? There are no changes in Sideset back.
This particular zoning fell under our prior R-55 development, and I believe it were... I don't have the older version with me at this moment.
I don't need it. Wasn't it like 12 foot at that time?
The current reg's eight feet.
Right. Current makes eight, but at that time, I thought it was a larger distance.
I'm thinking it was actually a smaller. I think it was five feet at one time, and we increased it to eight.
If you want to speak with Mr. Robinson to show him what you got, you can.
It was, we're not asking to change, but it was five.
That's fair. Under oath, it was five feet, and they're asking to stay at five feet.
Okay. Okay, I have another question of the acting officer. Go to the back. On the construction, what are you proposing as far as the materials on the side construction that faces the adjoining property?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
The construction materials between the two adjoining properties, how would they be built?
Between each house? You're talking about as far as...
Materials.
Sorry.
In the building and permit review process, I know just your concern about the proximity, building proximity to each other would be reviewed so that those side building architectures, you know, meets whatever the fire department would require or building department would require. We're not asking to vary or change that in any way. I don't know if you know any more specifics.
No, I don't. I don't have anything, other than that we would just have to adhere to whatever building code is necessary for having units within 10 feet of each other, because when you have five foot and five foot, it's only 10 feet, and I think that requires certain things.
My question is, would you amend this also to make it brick to the soffit, to give the fire department a chance? We have such long distance between departments. 10 foot is not going to be much with radiant heat, even though you may be using the concrete board, that's only good and only lasts as long as the fasciner's give away, and then it falls off the property, off of the house when it burns behind it. But brick all the way to the soffit will hold the heat back, make it go vertical instead of go sideways for a longer period of time. Would y'all do brick all the way to the soffit on the adjoining properties, in that five-foot buffer?
I mean, I guess I can, if you know, you can answer, I guess, what...
Well, how high up is that soffit typically?
What's that?
I actually don't know the answer to that question. Like, how far, how high up that brick would have to be?
All the way up to your soffit, to...
Yeah, I think the problem is we've got, you know, a national product. I think we would be happy to look at doing that and perhaps have that answer for the board, but I know that he's going to have to talk with his folks in production to know whether that's a change that they can make. And maybe that's, maybe it's an easy yes, I just, I don't know right now.
Yeah, I think we need to review that one.
I believe that this topic does fall back under what's going to take place in plan review, which you're going to have members of the Polley County Fire Department, which will, you know, comment directly to that issue and to that concern.
And I've talked to them about it, and they have those same concerns, because, like I said, even the concrete board, the hardy board, only holds for a certain amount of time until those fasciners turn loose and it falls off the property if it doesn't burn all the way through. And then where you have, and where you've got your, like, your wire outside air conditioning unit, things like that, any kind of opening in that hardy board reduces the effectiveness of it. So that's the reason I'm asking, and that's something I'm going to propose to the, when we do our next review with the county commission, is we include that, that it goes all the way to the soffit to hold some back some of the radiant heat. I'm an ex-firefighter, and to hold back that radiant heat until it gets to up high, and that gives them a lot more time to get there and to be able to fight the fire, because basically, the way things stand right now, you won't be losing one house. You'll be losing several houses before they can get there and get enough help to get additional trucks in. You're lucky this is in the Bentwater area, and it's going to have, it has a ladder there and an engine, but that's only two pieces of equipment, and you're talking about six guys and a station. That's not going to go very far. They have to go and get other, the next nearest station would be not, it'd be across 92, off of Highway 92, but the other stations would be Alway, New Hope, Dallas, Hiram... New Hope, Dallas, Hiram, and Burnt Hickory, so you've got a long distance before they get any help. And with a development this size, it's going to be a big problem.
For sure.
And that's the reason I'm saying, it would be good if it could go all the way to the soffit, it would hold back some of that radiant heat.
I guess, I mean, plan or view or not, we always want to consider, especially since it's been raised, if it's something that I knew that they could commit to now, we would. I wouldn't have a problem if there was a recommendation that asked us to look at that, for that to be reviewed with the fire department, maybe give them a chance to review whether that's something that they can commit to, at least as far as how to address it for right now, but, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Planning Commission? At this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding application 2025-01-SPSA. Please remember that we're talking about the deletion and amending existing stipulations from the previous zoning of this property. And please articulate that.
Also the addition of...
In addition of the...
Bell alarm.
Bell alarm, yes. Do I have anyone willing to make a motion? Going once?
I will take a stab at it.
Alright.
And I would say, motion to approve stipulations as listed, along with the bell type heat sensor included, and then a recommendation to look at the siding with the planning, when it goes to the planning review.
As a recommendation?
As a recommendation.
Mr. Callahan, just to clarify, does that, does your motion include the removal of the two elevations that Mr. Steele had referenced earlier? That would be...
Yes.
Just to clarify, can I modify that?
Okay.
Hang on a sec, alright. I tell you what, that would include the removal of Lakecrest Home Exterior LC-113, and, excuse me, that's Lakecrest Prestige Home Exterior LC-113, and LC-114.
And LC-114.
And that's your motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor at this time, with approval of the stipulations amended and deleted as listed, with the additional stipulation of the bell heat sensor, and removal of, and I'm just going to abbreviate, LC-113 and LC-114 floor plans. That's what's on the floor at this time. Is that good with you, or do you want to propose an amendment to the motion?
Okay, I'm good.
Alright, so I have that as a motion by Mr. Callahan, do I have a second? Second. Have a second by Mr. Aston, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 4, 2, and 1.
Mr. Chair, if you could announce who the opposition was?
Opposition was Ms. Fitzgerald and Mr. Leggett.
Thank you.
So, this application will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners, meeting on February 11th at 2:00 PM. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. And in case I was remiss before, with questions that may come from the Planning Commission, those questions and the time it takes for the back and forth on that, that does not count against either the applicant's time, or those that may be speaking in opposition, so just wanted to be clear on that, too. Mr. Robinson?
Okay, the next application, 2025-01Z, City of Hiram, application by Trayton LLC, requesting to rezone 30.56 acres from R-2 Suburban Residential District to R-55 Active Adult Residential District within the City of Hiram, for the development of approximately 120 single-family detached and attached townhomes, age-restricted residential homes. Advocate also requests approval of two variances, request to reduce the side setback from eight feet to five feet for the detached homes, and to reduce the front setback from 20 to 15 feet for the attached dwellings. Property is located in Land Lots 473 through 475, District 2, Section 3, located on the east, located east of Jimmy Lee Smith Parkway, south of Pace Road, that's within the Hiram City limits, and missing commission post 3. Staff has recommended denial on application, however, if the City Council decides to choose or chooses to approve the application, we recommend 11 stipulations that are printed out there, and we've had some general calls, but no opposition or anything.
If you would, please sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I'm Kevin Moore, here on behalf of the applicant Trayton Homes, in this application for rezoning for, as Mr. Robinson stated, just over 30 acres located in the City of Hiram. So this Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the Mayor and Council for the City of Hiram, where this will ultimately be determined. This property is located just off 278, bordered along the north side, as you can see, by Pace Road, and also along the west and south side, by Old Mill Road. The property is proposed to the R-55 zoning district, for an age-restricted development. It's actually, per our revised site plan that had been submitted, it's a maximum of 115 homes, that would be age-restricted, 55 years of age and older. Of those, the proposal is for a total of 85 of the 115 would be detached homes, and a total of 30 of those homes would be townhomes, in a townhome style, though they're wider townhomes, because all homes will meet the age-restricted standards to have master bedrooms on the main floor, as far as their construction goes, so that they meet the needs of the intended audience, intended home buyer, which is those that are age-restricted, 55 years of age and older. The property itself is just off 278, as you can see on your screen, it has a very limited amount of frontage on 278. The other properties along 278 there have already been developed for business and commercial uses, which adjoin this property along that frontage, as the property then moves back, and you get to Pace Road and Old Mill Road, you have a more typical residential type of neighborhood, as well as some larger tract acreage there. So this property sits in somewhat of an unusual situation, it's in the City of Hiram, the future land use plan designates this for future commercial. The issue with it being, is that the commercial property along 278 has already been developed, leaving this piece with very limited access, and off of the road, so it has limited visibility for commercial purposes, and really does not set up well as a commercial tract, from a marketing standpoint, or a market standpoint, to put in viable types of commercial uses here. Moreover, we don't also think, certainly from Trayton Homes' perspective, that having a commercial use for this 30-acre tract would really afford a proper transition of intensity and use, going from the commercial on 278, to the residential that's to the rear of this property, and to the south of this property, along Old Mill and Pace Road. We believe the proposal we have made for R-55, does allow for an appropriate land use transition, to transition you from the activity and noise and intensity that's associated with the commercial uses on 278, transition that to your single-family, more traditional single-family and larger tract acreage, off of Old Mill and Pace Road, which we believe is a more appropriate use. We understand staff's recommendation, and they're certainly weigh heavily on the land use plan designation, but we think that in this instance, those conditions have changed in this area, and that a better transition would be the proposed age-restricted community by Trayton Homes. Trayton Homes is a longtime home builder in this area, in Cobb, and in Polton, and Cherokee, and all of northwest Atlanta. They're a family-owned business, and have been since 1971. They have developed and constructed numerous age-restricted communities, which have been very successful, and they know how to execute and provide for excellent age-restricted communities, and would propose to do so in this location as well. In terms of age-restricted overall, I think it's important to note, as you review this and consider this, and that is just what we are looking at in terms of overall community, as a metropolitan Atlanta, Polton County, and be it nationwide, is that we are an aging country, and we're certainly leading aging, that is, an older population, a growing older population, both that is here, and is moving here in metropolitan Atlanta. One of the statistics that really stands out to me, in that regard, is that by the year 2030, for the first time in American history, we will have more people in this country over the age of 62 than under the age of 18. And that's an amazing statistic, when you look at it, and couple that with the fact that this particular, our area, our general area, is one of the fastest-growing in that regard. We have a, certainly a large amount of families that live in this area, and you have grandparents that live in other areas, and they want to move to be near their kids, and near their grandkids. And so, you have that combined with the fact that as people are growing older, and living in their homes, and want to have move downs, they don't want to keep up with the larger homes, and larger acreages, and they're looking to move to someplace that fits their lifestyle, and their options for living these days, and they want to continue, though, to live in their same area. A lot of the people that will buy homes here, live within 10 miles of this location, and that's what the statistics bear out, when it comes to age-restricted communities. You have the combination of those two buyers, primarily within 10 miles of this location. It's folks that have reached a point in their life where they've decided for them, and it's not everybody that's age 55, I mean, I'm 54, this is not a community I want to go to next, when I turn 55 this summer. That's not an option, I want, that's not my life right now. But for a lot of people, it is, and specifically, when you get older, that becomes an option that's very attractive for many buyers, and many homeowners, that want to make that change in their lifestyle, and for what they need and want. And that's why, we believe, an R-55 and age-restricted community here, is one that would be ideal for this location, particularly given, when you look at the larger area where this is located, it's in extremely close proximity to high-quality medical facilities, it's extremely close proximity to nearby shopping, retail, and commercial, as you can see on 278. The variety of shopping, retail available within a mile of this location is numerous, and so it provides a real ideal location, those that would move here, do not have far to travel, for their medical needs, for their shopping needs, and for their everyday needs, and that, to us, creates an ideal location for an age-restricted community. Staff's recommendation did include a list of proposed recommendations and conditions in the event this Planning Commission recommended approval. There's a total of 11 of those, of which we are in agreement with all 11 of those proposed conditions. Most of them do deal with recommendations as it relates to both Old Mill Road and Pace Road, where we would be dedicating sufficient right-of-way to make some future road improvements to align the intersection, as well as improvements along the shoulder of Pace Road, including additional dedication, so that that road is somewhat on the smaller side today, but that way it can have an improved shoulder, and have an improved streetscape along that aspect. In addition, this proposal includes a full amenity with pool and cabana, as well as community center, this, a part of this overall site plan, that also is targeted and constructed and designed for its intended home buyer, and that is a home buyer that would be a senior. In addition, we have ensured that our proposed site plan does meet all of the perimeter, exterior buffer requirements of the R-55 zoning ordinance for the City of Hiram. With that, we believe again, that this proposed rezoning and project is one that's ideally situated and located here, at this 30 and a half acres. I believe it can be of a benefit to the overall community, and certainly, versus a more traditional residential development at this location, it provides a third of the traffic, as an age-restricted community overall, as rule of thumb, as well as has no and zero impact on schools as well. So you have less impact on those items that we traditionally look at, in terms of development density and intensity, while providing an excellent location for a great community. I'm available to answer your questions, we also have representative of Trayton Homes that's here as well. I appreciate your questions, and would respectfully request your recommendation of approval with the conditions as identified by your staff.
Thank you for your comments. There is five minutes remaining on anyone wishing to speak on behalf of the application, but at this point, we go into the questions to the applicant. And you've already answered my typical question about the 11 proposed stipulations. We understand that county staff has recommended denial based on future land use map declarations by the City of Hiram, that this would be dedicated for commercial, as well as some other listed reasons behind that. But, to my question, going straight to the variances that are being requested, so you're looking at, asking to reduce the setback on the side setback from eight feet to five feet between homes?
Yes.
And you're looking to reduce required front setback from 20 to 15 feet, which takes away from front yard of the home, reducing the area for mowing, so to speak. Just sitting here as an administrator myself, I'm less concerned about the reduction of a setback on the front yard, generally speaking, than I am of the side setbacks. A lot of those are, reasons given is because of past experience with tightly-packed homes. My compatriot up here, Mr. Leggett, speaks to it frequently about the potential for fire hazard. You have a fire, and it spreads more easily, the closer they're bunched together. I know there are precautions and things that can be put in place to try to mitigate that, but ultimately, that is a concern of mine, I'm less favorable to that, basically, to deviating from what is considered the county standard, as opposed to trying to vary that particular number. Is that going to dissuade you from pursuing, doing this development, if that does not pass, but the other does, or they neither pass?
Sure, the, and I'll speak to both independently, and the, but to start, I always think it's good to answer your question first, and that is no. If those two variances requests are not supported, then we would still, we still believe this is a great location, and a great community, and we would simply alter, it is an adjustment in the site plan that would occur, primarily due to the side setback, and make sure we would allow for the full eight feet on the side setback. The front setback reduction can be accommodated with this plan, as is. If we simply hadn't met the front setback, we can do that. The idea here is twofold, number one, it reduces the amount of yard area, these yards are all maintained by the HOA as a whole, so you have a clean community at all times. It reduces some of that front yard area, as well as provides for the homes to be located closer, a little closer to the street, gives you a better, we think, a better feel, but if that's not something that's supported, we're perfectly fine with that. As with the other, we would just make an adjustment in our plan, if that's the case.
Okay.
And understanding the comments from Mr. Leggett, as well as the ones you said.
Well, you know what I'm going to ask then?
I do, I do now.
Are you amenable to the bell type alarm in those residences?
We would like to investigate that, and work with the city to see if there was alternatives to that, or if that is in fact the way to go, to add for two things, and that would be for fire alarm and fire suppression, and to work with the city on how we could improve those items for the proposed homes, and I think that's how, I just don't want to commit to a bell type thing, if there's a bell type system, if there's a better one available. a bell type system, if there's a better one available. That's all.
I don't see, from some of the investigation I've done, that is the best method with the heat detector and the bell type because they're loud enough.
Sure.
That even if you don't have hearing aids in, you're gonna hear them, you'll feel the vibration of them if nothing else. But how many rooms in your homes here are sprinkled?
Unless these, and I'm not aware what the city of Hiram's building requirements are in terms of sprinkler or not.
I can answer that for you. It's the same as Paulding County's.
Okay. And as far as sprinkling, these would not be proposed to be sprinkled, but I think you're also asking about the number of bedrooms and the layout, was that part of that question as well?
Well, not, not necessarily the, what is the maximum bedrooms that you're proposing?
Sure. These, these units are two bedrooms with a third optional bedroom. That third optional bedroom, some treated as a bonus room or some treated as a, you know, a bonus type of room or some basically converted to a bedroom.
And that makes more sense for someone that, an older couple that's moving the downsides, that makes more sense.
Yes.
What about, would you consider deleting the townhomes and having all of the same development of the standard homes?
We would certainly consider that if that's the recommendation from this planning commission, we would certainly look into that. The reason for, for the two different products is so we could offer two different products with the, we've had, Traton's had great success with the townhome age restricted product. You don't normally think of a townhome as an age restricted, but they have a much wider townhome product that allows for all of the master and living area to be on the, on the main floor. And it also offers a more attainable type of price point and that way they can offer two different price points. One probably in the mid fours for the townhome product and then you get approaching to fives and up for the detached. But that allows them to have just a little bit of that differentiate, difference within the community itself and that's why it's proposed. If it's this commission's recommendation for that to be all detached, then we would work with that and work with the city towards that.
Okay. And my final one is, not my final one, the next one is would y'all consider, a lot of, like I'm talking about, where the properties are joined in that buffer area that you would go all the way to the, to the soffit, to the roofline with your, with brick as, it's another fire retardant to keep the main heat of the main structure inside that structure and it won't radiate. You're talking now, if we go five foot, if that's approved, you're talking six foot from roofline to roofline. And that's not, when you're talking about radiant heat, you know, that's not very much at all. Have you ever stood by a bonfire and, you know, you feel that radiant heat and you keep on moving away from that radiant heat that house can't move away from and then, and you're gonna have structure to structure fires that way. And that's without any kind of adverse wind conditions. Fire creates wind, conviction of the heat creates wind. And what you're trying to do by restricting this that way with the bricks and this dense of development, it keeps that radiant heat contained inside the first structure. But by the, and on top of that, like I told this, the other gentleman, he's got better fire protection than you do because you've got one station in a Hiram with one ladder and one engine and a rescue. The next station is gonna be in Dallas. The next station is all the way up in New Hope off of East Paulding Drive. So there's not gonna be a quick response, you know, for backup for a station that's, you know, already short on fire. We got a great fire department. We've got great equipment. We don't have enough of it. And that's where the problems are gonna be when the dense development like this catches on fire. It's not gonna be one. I talked to a gentleman, one of my friends with Douglas County Fire Department. And when they have a development like this, they don't lose one home, they lose three to four and they've still got damage from the radiant heat for four or five mortiments on the design of the structures around it.
Sure.
Of where the location of them, of how close they are. So would you consider that, doing the bricks on the adjoining sides? It didn't have to be in the back, didn't have to be in the front, just those adjoining sides.
It, it would result in, the only way to do that to make it look right is you're essentially making them three sided brick.
That'd be fine too.
I understand. What we can commit to is, it's not much different than what you heard the prior gentleman say. For us to look at what we can do from a fire suppression standpoint, understanding the concern and certainly understand your qualifications for saying this is a concern and one you ought to be, ought to be paying attention to. And we're happy to look at those and employ some, if that's it or other options or alternatives that we may be able to look at. I just can't commit to that type of exterior at this point in time.
Okay. Well, my final, what, what about no access to Pace Road? I know you're committing to the expansion of the right of way on Pace Road, but that's such a curvy road, it's a dangerous road. It's so curvy and, and people don't go the speed limit on it. Would you confine your entrances and exits to Old Mill and 278? Because Old Mill is, it's just a short drive to 278 by O'Reilly's there.
Right.
But Pace Road, it would be no benefit to your development.
Which way is it?
It's not really down here. It's me.
Yeah. I didn't realize I could put it up myself, so thank you. Thank you, Ann. Yes, so, yeah, I was looking at it on my, on my plan. We, we don't, we don't have, do not have an objection to having the access, two access points, one on Old Mill and one on 278 so long as we can meet the site distance requirements on Old Mill, but that's not a...
Well, I, I do believe that in that instance, that it would be the Paulding County Department of Transportation on the county roads, which both Old Mill and Pace Road is, they will tell you where an acceptable entrance can be based on site distance as well as vertical and horizontal alignment of the roadway. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Director Jones.
No, you're correct. Obviously when lanes are built, infrastructure going onto an existing county road, you look at such things as sightlines, available area, et cetera, et cetera. And that will all be looked at and investigated during the plan review process to make sure that any infrastructure constructed does meet the requirements based on the county regulations, any applicable state or federal laws.
Well, we also recognize that what's presented here today is a concept that will probably change in some way, shape or form based on what comes out of plan review. But in alignment with what Mr. Leggett is saying, that that needs to be located at the safest point on a county road for a secondary entrance or primary entrance or what have you. And then GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation will control what you have to do in relation to tying into 278.
Correct.
And item number four on the zoning stipulations kicks it back to them anyway.
Yes, I was gonna point that out as well, but from your point, we'd have no objection if it was on Old Mill as long as it was.
I've traveled that road pretty often, my chiropractors on it and I've almost been hit head on two or three times on that road, just in that short distance.
Which I know is why there was the recommendation as it relates to improving the shoulder along Pace Road. We have no objection if we moved it to Old Mill and will certainly, from our standpoint, it's.
I think that'd be a lot preferable to both of us in the long run because of the access out to 278 there, O'Reilly's is, it's got good vision, good access. And like I said, Pace Road's horrible.
Right. So we would have no objection to moving that.
I have no further questions.
Are there any other questions from the planning commission? Mr. Aston?
So you're proposing the side setbacks to five feet. How do you propose to get positive drainage between the structures? I've noticed it's a topographically challenged site. I was looking at some of the lots, I got a full size plan and it looked like most of the lots was 10 foot change in elevation from one side of the lot to the other and some back in the back was even 18 feet. I mean, if they were put back to eight feet, it seems to me like, we've had this discussion in planning commission and the board commissioner before that that's, that's a huge challenge to get positive drainage between those structures. Because what happens is down the road, if it is approved, the county ends up getting blamed for allowing it to happen in many cases. It has to be some kind of swale or some kind of catch basin system or something. And also the setback from the road or from the right of way to 15 feet, that puts, that puts that 30 feet from the curb, which so the average vehicle is approximately 15 feet in the United States. So if they have company and over the holidays, whatever, and they double park, that's gonna put the second vehicle out at the edge of the road or edge of the curb, especially if there's a pickup truck or some of these super cap pickup trucks or crew cap pickup trucks. It puts them out, almost sticking out in the road, but what's your response to that?
Sure. First, you were, you were correct in terms of drainage, handling drainage between the homes is done through swales and catch basins, sometimes combinations of both. I know that Traton's, many of its senior age restricted communities where they have five foot setbacks, that is how that is handled to ensure, because the last thing you want is your new homeowner coming back to you and complaining about drainage in their side yard. But that's how that would be handled. It would be handled that way regardless of whether it's a five foot side or an eight foot side. So that, and again, I think I addressed about the, what this commission, if it recommends and where we would go with that. On the front setback, our driveways are actually a minimum of 21 feet from the garage to the edge of sidewalk, which leaves us enough room to have a car parked outside the garage before it would overhang the sidewalk. But again, if that's a reduction that this commission doesn't support, we have the room to accommodate the 20 foot front setback and we would, that, that would be fine for us if that's, if that's a sticking point. We don't want that to be a sticking point, I'll put it that way.
This layout that you have on the screen, it's, it's with the eight foot setbacks or is it with the five foot setbacks?
It's with the five foot setbacks.
And you have a total of 85 detached single family?
That's correct.
What would the number be if you're, if you're not granted a variance?
It might be reduced a little bit. There's some, you know, engineer designers, because this is conceptual, that it would, it might reduce that number some, by, by some, but not by a monumental a number here. There's some places where it gets tight and there's some where you could gain some ground and spread that out a little bit so you can make sure that they can accommodate.
What's the, what's the width of the lots?
These are 51 foot widths, the minimum is, not all of them, but the minimum is 51 feet. And the homes are, their homes are 39 feet wide so that you're just trying to accommodate some additional width in the side and it would just be some adjustments through it.
Hey, you'll, I mean, you'll reduce your lot count, I mean.
You would.
You'll go down five, six?
You could.
Any other questions from the planning commission, Mr. Wicks?
Yeah, I have a question. So in your letter of intent, you, you point out, you know, kind of the elephant in the room, the fact that the property is already is on the R2. So you're asking for a proposed R-55. But you stated in here that with the current R2 classification, it already allows for development of the property. So for your client, Traton Homes, would they, are they looking at the possibility of if the R-55 is not approved, that they would move forward with a proposal for a development of the R2? Or is it, they are just interested in the R-55?
They are interested in the R-55 proposal for the reasons I stated in the presentation. Whether they would pursue this as an R2 development, if ultimately it's denied, they would make that decision later, later. But they have not contemplated that as a, that's what they're intending to do here.
Do they currently own the property?
They do not. It's under contract.
All right. Any other questions to the applicant?
Did Traton provide any schematics or any elevations of their product?
They, we do have a couple of the elevations. I don't know if Mr. Robinson was able to put those in this or not, but I can, I do have a couple I can show you.
And do you have, do you have another community that's close by that's the same product style or the same line of product?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if it's in Cobb or if it's...
Okay. For the, the three off the top of our heads, there's one in Hickory Flat called Courtyards at Hickory Flat. There's two that are across the street from each other at Stilesboro, on Stilesboro Road just south of this intersection with Barrett Parkway.
You know the name of the community?
The one in Hickory Flat is Courtyards at Hickory Flat. There's one that's Kurt Farm.
Are they currently for sale? I mean, can I find them online?
If they've, you should be able to find them online if they're not already sold out.
Okay.
Yeah. And then those would be two off the top of my head as well as, and they've done, they have one on Mars Hill, that's been sold out for a little bit, so you may not be able to find it online as well. There was a large one on Mars Hill, kind of near the intersection of Stilesboro when it hits Mars Hill in Cobb.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Thank you. May I take your seat?
Thank you for your questions.
Did you have something you wanted to add, Mr. Jones?
I did, Jody. Our department went out and used a slope and kilometer along the rough area perimeter of this property along Pace Road and Old Mill Road. And from those measurements, the horizontal and vertical curvature, actually it was improved on Pace Road versus Old Mill Road. Also, Old Mill Road is a little bit narrower than Pace Road also, so my recommendation would be not to essentially lock yourself into saying access on one road or the other, but to leave it as it is right now and go through the plan review process so to determine where access should be provided.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to the application or may have questions, comments or concerns? Please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name and then address your comments
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Dakota Kreider. I have actually lived on Pace Road for quite some time, 30 years to be exact. First off, that road, Pace Road itself, like you did state, Mr. Leggett, it is a very curvy road. I myself have actually almost been hit many times even just cutting my grass. With looking at what is on the screen currently, where that entrance is, it is actually going into a almost blind curve. There is a 90 degree curve right there. I would say without measuring it out or anything, that's roughly 150 foot away. So, and then as you stated as well, Mr. Leggett, people do not follow that speed limit on that road. That speed limit is 25. I just had a gentleman, I swear, he was doing every bit of 80 down that road. Three years ago, there was a gentleman, he had gotten to an argument with his girlfriend. He was doing 95 down that road, hit the curve, rolled it three times, landed in my front yard. No joke, I have pictures of it, he landed in my front yard. Luckily, the gentleman did walk away. He was wearing his seatbelt. As well as looking at it and possibly putting an entrance on Old Mill Road. Old Mill Road has an actual very sharp S curve. If you go 25 on that S curve, which is the road speed limit, you're winding up in the adjoining property's house. You're not... as well, I've known them for quite some time. And then, myself, them, and the hundred and thirty-three other signatures that I have, along with comments as well, we are against this happening, because not only will it be detrimental to the area, the wildlife population, that's aside, and then the applicant spoke of widening the roads. If folks cannot go twenty-five miles an hour on a curvy two-lane road, what are they going to do when it's a three-lane, or having a passing lane? They are going to do nothing but race up and down this road. I myself have kids that are very young, I don't want them to getting, to get hit. I don't let my kids play out in the front yard, even though they want to, because I don't want another car coming up in my front yard and killing myself or my family. And I don't think the commissioners want that to happen either, especially if they can't follow the speed limit. Also, with this proposition, it, please forgive me, with this proposition, it will, you know, not only take away, it will actually even add to the schools, even though some say it won't add into the schools. I know some, some very good friends of mine, they started their family late in life, and they have young kids as well. So, you know, even if it's a R55 community, there's going to be kids as well. Even from this, I would say roughly a mile, mile and a half down the road, Old Mill, there is a hundred and fifty homes, I believe, going in on that. So two subdivisions of great size, going in very close to each other, and there's one school, one middle school, and one high school that is close by. As well as, as Mr. Leggett stated as well, the fire department, there, Hiram has one fire department, and due to family, emergency medical, Hiram, their average response time is seven to ten minutes, and it's only two-point-two miles away. And where this will be going in, I would say that's only a half a mile from my house. So if it's ten minutes to drive two miles, how much is, how much longer is it going to take to get another half a mile down the road? Let only be as if the houses become a fuse, and next thing you know, one's on fire, and now you have four houses on fire. So, I don't technically have anything else to add myself, it's just we are against it. I don't know if the, my other two neighbors would like to speak as well. I only have one copy of the signatures. Again, I said I have a hundred and thirty-three signatures that were signed, that's against this development.
If you would like for us to see that, you can pass it to Mr. Robinson, and we can take a look at it.
I have one copy.
We'll get it back to you.
As well as, my neighbor, Ms. Diane, she actually had received this, and my other neighbors, I had confront, talked with them, they did not receive this letter. This letter was stating of the application, 2025-01-Z, by Treighton LLC. How is it that one person out of how many ever that live on this road only received this one letter?
Generally, those notifications are sent out to adjacent property owners.
I'm sorry, sir?
Generally, those notifications are sent out to adjacent property owners to the development. But I do know that the county makes every effort to try to contact everyone they're legally supposed to contact. However, you also have to rely on the United States Postal Service. I don't know your experience with them, but I can tell you some stories if you'd like.
Oh, I, I understand, sir, but however, this was sent out on December twentieth of twenty-four, which, you know, typically, if someone of a government entity needs to get in touch with you, they're sending out not one, but three letters. I understand, print and stamps and all that costs a little bit of money, but, you know, it's one of those, it's like to be known. The only reason I knew that this area was up for rezoning is because I seen the big white poster out on the property itself.
That's wonderful. That's exactly what's supposed to happen.
Exactly.
Mr. Kreider, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So Mr. Robinson handed me the list. How did you acquire all these people? Where did you go door-to-door?
I went through the website, change.org, which is an online petition.
So this is not everybody that lives on Pace or Old Mill?
There is a good bit that live on Pace and Old Mill, some of those have moved away, and they lived there many years beforehand, so.
I'm just seeing a lot out of state, too. That was why I asked Texas.
Correct. I understand that. Unfortunately, I don't control the website. That's actually one thing I was hoping not to have happen of, oh, I've got Jim Bob and Tom out in California signing it, you know?
Right, I understand.
So.
Thank you.
If, we can make sure you get that list back?
Yes, sir.
If that's the extent of your comments, you may take your seat, and if anyone else wishes to speak, now's the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to the application? Okay. Hearing none, we'll close that portion. We'll take a look at the list. Are there any questions to staff? I know that there were some earlier, does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question, staff. Mr. Robinson, does it meet the comp plan, or not meet the comp plan?
The existing current comp plan with the city of Hiram future land use shows it as potential commercial.
Okay.
Is what it says stated in.
The staff recommendation is denied.
That's correct.
Thank you.
The applicant will please come back forward. Again, there were five minutes remaining, you can use that for rebuttal. We may have additional questions for you, but I'll await your use of that time.
Just in, in terms of clarifying, the recommendations from Paulding County, in the event this was approved, as it relates to Pace Road, if there's an access there, were not to add another lane, it's simply a shoulder improvement project, for lack of a better word, that would allow for, for Pace Road to not have such a narrow feel and appearance, and would provide for a shoulder, and that's what that would be. I just want to clarify that for, for Mr. Kreider. As far as his other comments, I believe those were addressed in my, in my presentation, and I'll let that stand where it is.
Was that a yes or a no on that heat alarm? I didn't get that clear.
On the heat alarm?
On the heat alarm that I asked you about.
Right. It was, yes, unless there's a better alternative that we would find with the city of Hiram, that's, that's all.
Okay.
I, I believe you, but I just, I know our folks haven't used that in the past, and so they just would want to make sure that's what, what would do the job.
You could put it on there, or better.
Or better.
Or better, that's fine.
Based on what you've presented, again, I already mentioned that the site plan that you provided is a concept, you know, things are apt to change after they go through the plan review process, which would also address the roadway safety with regard to where they're entering traffic, and whatever improvements might need to be done to accommodate that. There are going to be additional questions, because approve or deny, this will be forwarded to the city of Hiram for their final action on the matter, which you will need to contact them for that. But I know that there'll be additional questions with regard to the interior developments as well, at that time.
Yes.
Are there any other comments from planning commission? Mr. Wicks, one of the comments from Mr. Kreider was concern about adding to the public school system, and I just, I know there's criteria that you must look at, so if you don't mind addressing your standpoint on R55.
So with R55, what the school system does is we engage with a demographics study platform. And with that, with the amount of R55s that are currently in the district, we, whether or not they're looking outside of the district, I'm not aware, but with the R55s that are currently inside of the district, there is no, there's not enough impact to the school system to warrant a, an aspect to the student yield factor. So what they do with student yield factor is they look at various things, and I won't go into the specifics on that. But basically, what it does is they look at how big the development is, when the development is coming, all of the phasing of the developments, mobility rates, people moving back and forth, rental rates and rental movement. Along with that, they've got the R55 aspect, where they're looking at how many people are in R55s that are actually producing children. So what we do is, between them, our transportation department, we actually have addresses for all of the students that attend the, the school system. Currently, there is no, again, there is not enough data to support putting in a student yield factor for an R55 community, because they're not producing enough for Paulding County. Other counties may be different, that may change in the future, but currently, that is what it is. But if you look at the fact in this matter, there may not be an increase, or a potential increase, that we're looking at for a student yield currently, but the property is already zoned at R2. So if the property is already zoned at R2, you know, hypothetically, you could have a developer come in, go straight through the plan review process, go through the permitting process, do everything else, and not come before this board, and potentially build however many houses that the, the property would allow. That would be a student yield, because it would then be an R2 appropriate house.
Without age restriction. So if there's no further comment or questions to staff at this time, you've got the recommendations from the staff being to deny, but if it should be approved, that there would be eleven stipulations, possibly a twelfth, based on the conversation with Mr. Leggett. Also, with regard to the variance request, you would need to consider that in your motion.
Mr. Chair, if I can recommend, if there is a motion to approve that passes, then I would take up each of the variances independently after that.
Okay.
If there is a motion to deny that passes, then there's no reason to take up the variance request.
Got you. Thank you. So at this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2025-01-Z, City of Hiram.
I'd like a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny from Mr. Aston.
Second.
I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion to deny passes for two and one. The opposition to the denial is Mr. Wicks and Mr. Leggett. Again, this would be forwarded to the city of Hiram for their consideration. You will need to contact Cliff McGrady, who is the zoning administrator for the city of Hiram, to determine how to proceed from here.
Mr. Chairman, the next two applications actually run together, and I was going to make sure, or see if it's okay with the board, if I just read both of them, even though you'll vote on them separately.
You know how that confuses me, now go ahead.
Thank you. Next application, 2025-02Z, application by Haven Dallas One LLC requesting to rezone approximately 1.747 acres from R2 suburban residential district to B2 highway business district. This is in addition to a special use permit, 2025-01-SUP, for a self, proposed self-storage facility. The parcel will be joined to the adjacent property to the north, which is 5.933 acres, and already zoned B2 with a special use permit, and this would be added to it as a, for self-storage facility and a retail space. Property is located in Land Lots 878, District Two, Section Three, it's on the east side of Villarica Highway, south of Hiram Sooty Road, Sin Commission Post Three. Staff has recommended approval with six printed stipulation. Application 25, 2025-01-SUP, application by Haven Dallas One LLC requesting a special use permit on 1.747 acres for a self-storage facility. The parcel will be joined to the adjacent 5.933 acre property to the north for a proposed retail building and a self-storage facility. The property is located in Land Lot 878, District Two, Section Three, on the east side of Villarica, Villarica Highway, south of Hiram Sooty Road, Sin Commission, Commission Post Three. Staff also recommends approval on the SUP with six printed stipulations, and we have had no noted cause or, of opposition or concerns on this one. Advocate is present.
Yes, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This application, as Mr. Robinson indicated, is for almost two acres, it's 1.7 acres, Villarica Highway. It's both an application to rezone the property, it's currently zoned, actually, R2, and so we're requesting rezoning to B2 highway business, also requesting a special use permit for self-storage, which is also required for this tract. This particular application really has more context, as somewhat referenced by Mr. Robinson. When you're looking at your overall map, you'll see the property that's under consideration today is noted as R2, it's in the peach kind of orange color on your, depending on what your screen looks like. You can see it has very limited frontage on Villarica Highway, it sits behind existing B2 commercial property. But along this entire northern boundary, you'll see the, that larger tract, that was approved in 2022 for a special use permit for self-storage. That was in 2022, it was already zoned B2. That plan include for self-storage, as well as for a commercial building that would be out front on Villarica Highway. What this proposal is, is to add this 1.7 acre tract to that overall property, and that's to, and it makes sense, once you look as well at the overall site plan. Now you can see the overall site plan. Again, this is the tract on the northern side that is already zoned B2 with a special use permit for self-storage, and that's the layout from that particular zoning. It includes the commercial building that's out front here, that's just off of Villarica Highway, and what we'd be adding is this bottom 1.7 acres here. And just adding that overall, kind of completes the development, and completes this property, especially when you go back and you kind of see now the positioning of this 1.7 acres. It sits behind, essentially sits behind two commercial tracks, one facing out on Villarica Highway, and the existing self-storage tract that's there. As this, from a overall development standpoint, this tract kind of is sitting by itself, it has very, very limited utility and use, certainly as R2, and has very limited utility as some type of separate business or commercial use. This proposal is in keeping with the character area and future land use classification for this property, and we believe, you know, had this tract been available at the time, we would have brought it in, in 2022, when it was in this, as I said, this 2022 application was approved by the Board of Commissioners. The recommendation from staff includes a total of six conditions that apply both to the rezoning, as well as six conditions that apply to the special use permit. All of those conditions are acceptable and agreeable to this applicant. They're in keeping and consistent with the conditions that were approved in 2022. As you can see by the, the site plan that we have proposed, we maintained the important aspects of the 2022 approval. Importantly, that was having a separate commercial building out front with the storage to the rear. We have well-defined buffers that keep this away from existing residential in terms of proper buffering, such that this proposed use of self-storage is really adjoining the existing commercial on Villarica Highway with sufficient buffers to any residential property. We think this development fills out this area. Uh, we think this development, uh, fills out this area appropriately, uh, given what has been approved and what's existing. Uh, and again, we are in agreement with staff's recommendation for approval with the conditions. Simply ask that, uh, while we know, realize this commission will need to take two separate votes on the applications, uh, I prefer for my comments and presentation on the zoning case to also be applicable to the special use permit application, uh, so that I don't have to repeat myself. Save you the time.
Can't understand why you wouldn't want to go through this twice.
It's more for your sake than mine.
Well, you've already addressed the stipulation question, so you have a question, Mr. Leggett?
Yes. So basically, we're looking at just two more rows of buildings for the storage. Is that right?
I believe it's one, two, three.
Is there three?
I want to count it out.
But, um, but it won't be campers, things like that. It will be the, the many buildings to store.
It is the buildings. It's not for outside or parking storage. It is the buildings.
How many current?
Opposed.
How many current buildings are there?
It has not been developed yet.
Right. So have you guys been to GDOT yet on, uh, access for this? And the reason I ask is I looked at a piece just south of you, uh, and I could not get access. There's a site distance issue on 61 South, just below this.
It is, um, here, uh, there have been preliminary discussions with GDOT on that access. It's one of the conditions, uh, that's, that's both present in the original 22, uh, 2022 approval, as well as this, as terms of coordination of access there. And we have accounted for the additional right of way that is being acquired, uh, for that on our plan.
Okay. I don't think it's the same piece that I looked at, but I, I did look at one very close to this and couldn't get the access.
This is a pretty good, where this is located is pretty straight.
Right. Yeah, as you go south, you have, you have a vertical issue, so. Are there any other questions from planning commission to the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and questions.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments or concerns? If you'd come around, sign in, state your name and address your comments to me.
Good afternoon. My name is, uh, Jim Newport. I own the properties next to this, that's south of there, 3425 and 3427. I don't really have a prop, say, a problem with that, other than I've got a bad taste from what I got in front of me already. So more of this, I live there. I already got a barbecue place, a tire shop, a pawn shop that the person left and got an apartment up above it. And now we got this that used to be a landscape place that had porta johns and everything else out there. I'm just concerned with, plus the, my brother-in-law's handicap, he's bedridden, he's, anyway. I just oppose it from that standpoint. I don't like to, I don't want to wake up in the morning and already looking at that and now I'm going to look at this. That's just all I got to say about it, really.
Mr. Newport, what, what address do you live at?
Oh, is that 3431 that you might have been, that you denied, uh, GOT?
It, it may have been. I don't recall exactly which piece, but which, what's your address? Where are you at on this map here?
Well, south of this property, 3425. There's a 3427.
Do you mind stepping up here and pointing to it for me?
Is your residence behind the barbecue place?
Correct.
Okay.
Are you on the right page? Can you see it?
Yeah, it's here.
Okay.
It was here.
That's you. Okay. Thank you.
I would sell it.
Thank you, Mr. Newport.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Moore. With the develop, development of a commercial piece up against a residential piece, a lot of times the prescription would call for some very thickly planted buffer. Not saying that that's going to satisfy, um, the gentleman who just spoke. And I had that as New Heart, am I, am I right? Newport, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Newport, uh, as a concern of his is waking up and having a look at his window and see that, which I can sympathize with.
Me too.
The requirement on the county, and I guess Chris could allude to what the actual requirement is.
The minimal requirement through the B2 zoning district is 40 foot of buffer. In this case, it would require planning.
Because there's no current existing buffer there?
Not adjacent to. The actual house, uh, 3427 Villarica Highway.
So I don't know which way this is going to go. I can't prejudice the planning commission's decision. Never would attempt to do that. But I would highly recommend, um, maybe acquaint yourself with Mr. Newport. Never hurts to talk with people.
Of course.
And try to address concerns. I would always advocate that. But is there, um, was that already on the, uh, agenda to be able to do a planted buffer for screening purposes?
Yes, there is. Uh, our plan, uh, already identifies the minimum, uh, 40 foot buffer that's adjacent to Mr. Newport's, uh, property. Uh, incorporates that as part of the plan and calls it out. Uh, that plan would be to, uh, heavily, uh, screen and tree that, uh, for screening purposes. That's, that's why the buffer area exists, uh, adjacent to residential, uh, is for there to be heavily screened. And I will certainly get, uh, be happy to get with Mr. Newport, uh, and will have conversations with him and hopefully be able to assure him of what's going to be planted there, given to that, uh, you know, this is one-story self-storage. Uh, it's a pretty low intensity type of use. So hopefully, uh, that's something that he won't have to be bothered with. Uh, it's fairly quiet most of the time, 90% of the time.
Why have this fencing you normally put around yours? Eight foot around the outer perimeters?
Be six or eight feet.
Would it be possible to do some, some type of, uh, some kind of, uh, netting or something like that would, that would block the, the buildings from his location? It wouldn't, I don't think it'd be necessary toward the front of, toward 61, but where it faces his home, could you put some type of netting on the fencing to, to occlude some of that?
It's opaque, right? I believe the term is opaque.
Opaque, yeah. I've heard of that.
Yeah. We use, uh, and it'd be eight feet, eight-foot fencing and opaque, with opaque fencing along that boundary adjacent to Mr. Newport. Sure.
And that alleviate, you know, some of his, his problems with it?
Sure. We want, we want to be neighborly too, and that's, that's appropriate reason. Thank you.
Are there any other questions to the applicant for planning commission? Did you have anything you wanted to address? Cause you did have time remaining. I didn't want to shortchange you.
I did not. I thought if, if you hadn't asked, I was simply going to address the buffer and, and potential fencing. And so those have been asked and, and answered for you. So thank you.
So this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application 2025-02-Z.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mr. Leggett with the six listed stipulations. Is there a second? I have a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero and one. And then we have a motion for 2025-01-SUP.
Make a motion to approve then, also.
Motion to approve with the six listed stipulations.
With the.
From Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Aston. All in favor? Motion passes six, zero and one. Well, that concludes our business with the exception of the minutes. Um, if, yes, Mr. Steele?
I was going to that.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm the vote was determined to be a three-two vote?
It did.
And the nay votes were?
Ms. Fitzgerald voted against.
Okay. So with that amendment in mind, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with an edit for Mr. Steele and Ms. Fitzgerald being removed from four to against.
I have a motion to approve with the necessary amendments from Mr. Steele and a second from Ms. Fitzgerald. Y'all just stick together, don't you?
Do we need to specify which one is four?
I think we do.
Okay. It's 2024-12-SUP.
There we are. All right. All in favor of the motion? Motion passes six, zero and one. And we are concluded, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Microphone's already on. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn from Mr. Steele, second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Six, two, six, zero and one. I don't know where my math is going. Y'all have a wonderful January.